moving in that direction. But.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:00 PM on Monday, June the 3rd, and this is the regular meeting of District 882 Monticello School Board meeting. Welcome, everyone. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, free, right, and visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect that Member Melissa Curtis is absent this evening. So we are going to move into our regular agenda. We have a tentative agenda at this point and need to move it to be our permanent agenda for the evening.
So moved.
By Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of making our agenda permanent for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. We have no citizens' comments for this evening. Moving into our consent agenda, members receive a copy of Minutes for Approval and Personnel Matters ahead of time, have the opportunity to ask any questions ahead of time, and we move these items together as a consent agenda on the permanent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the Agenda Minutes and Personnel Matter?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Moving into number six, our Collaborative Connections, we have resolution for acceptance of gifts that Superintendent Olson will be discussing this evening.
Right. Here are the four gifts here that we would love for you to accept. $1,000 for the purchase of a refrigerator for the high school fax department. This was from Dahlheimer Beverage. Monticello VFW, post 8731. $1,100 for the use of Northwest Talent Academy summer scholarships. So we have the Northwest Talent Summer Program again this summer, and this would be for students who cannot afford the entry fee. Hospitality Minnesota Education Foundation, $3,012.80 for the reimbursement of food costs and serve-safe certification exams of our food service department. Monticello Lions Club, $500 for nature-based cross-country ski, to be able to add to the repertoire of things that the nature base can do out there. The Lions Club donated $500 for ski equipment.
So we have a resolution that will be read by Jeff Hegley.
Therefore, it be resolved by the Monticello School, there's check number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations. Dahlheimer Beverage Incorporated, $1,000 for purchase of a refrigerator. School Fax Department, Monticello VFW, post 8731. $1,100 for Northwest Talent Academy scholarships. Hospitality Minnesota Education Foundation, $3,012.80 for reimbursement of food costs and serve-safe certification exams. And the Monticello Lions Club, $500 to assist with the nature-based cross-country ski program.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jamie Seeben. All those in favor of approving our generous donations as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say no. The motion passes 5-0. Along with this, I'd like to take an opportunity to welcome everyone on June the 17th to our thank you to the community. We're having a thank you for all of our donors in a reception one hour preceding our regular school board meeting. So that would be 5:00 PM, sorry, 5:00 PM on Monday, June the 17th. Please join us to say thank you to all of our generous donors this year.
And then just along with that, you know, admin have been invited for that celebration. And then today in the district news that went out, we would like anybody, so if principals and directors can encourage people who went to civic organizations or places in the community to request funds, that those people are present. It'd be great to be able to connect the people who asked for the donation to actually be at the celebration. So we'll continue to encourage people, but obviously administration encouraging at the local level would be great, too. Thank you.
And then to, just to tag on that, if we were to add up all of the donations that we've received since July of the school year, 2023 till now, including the in-kind donations, we're at almost $200,000, which is really astonishing in the light of how the economy is kind of tough for a lot of people right now. So we really don't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to all of the people who've been so generous to us this year. So please join us on the 17th.
Just one more thing that we decided to add today is just so not only is it the $200,000 that Kathy shared, but we also invited all the scholarship donors as well. So we're really trying to reach out far and wide across the community to thank people for their services. And it's also the human capital of volunteering as well.
And that's almost another $200,000, right? About $178,000 in local scholarships that are given out. So that's just really an astonishing amount of money, supporting our kids. And every penny of the money that's donated goes to the kids, not to overhead or administrative costs or anything like that. So we just really thank everybody tremendously for the donations that we've received this year for our programs. So moving into item number seven, Teaching and Learning, we have Cindy, Fashioning Director of Teaching and Learning with us this evening. That's going to give us a summer program update. Welcome, Cindy. Thank you.
You got me, Gavin? Thanks. All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm here to just give you a quick summer update on what's been going on with programming and what we have planned this summer. Oops, sorry. There we go. All right. So I'm going to talk mainly about academic programming that we have going on this summer. So we have six different programs happening. We have some preschool programs, some ESY programming, that stands for Extended School Year, that's special education programming, targeted services, credit recovery, C5, and connections, and then our NWTA programming. So first off, the purpose of summer school programming, so each slide I will tell you the purpose of the program, and then basically what's happening in the program, or show you some sample schedules. So the first one is our ESY Extended Year Programming. That'll happen the month of June, Monday through Thursdays minus June 19. And then the purpose of ESY is to provide remedial services and additional extended services for our special education students, required minutes according to their IEPs for PK through 12 or beyond grade 12. And then also extension services for them, so that they can receive things like reading, extra reading, extra math, writing blocks. They get extra experience with rec and leisure, so large motor skills, small motor skills, things like that. Included in their schedule, you'll see sensory breaks, social skill instructions, speech and language, deaf heart of hearing, vision services, all of those kinds of things that'll happen for them throughout the month of June. And what you'll see for most of our programs is we're trying to stick to the month of June because of the construction that's happening, that'll be happening at the beginning of July, and the transportation difficulties that we would have if we went into or beyond June. So what you'll see for most of those. The second program does happen in July and August. So that's Monday through Thursdays in July and August, and that's our Eastview Education Center Preschool Programming. Some of the things, again, that they'll be working on is to prepare our students for kindergarten and how to be in school as a regular student. So they'll be having academic blocks, structured play, a lot of outdoor movement, a lot of outdoor structured play, social emotional skills, again, lots of communication integrated throughout their day, lot of hands-on projects that teachers will be doing with those students. We have some of our best kindergarten teachers who are manning that ship, so that's great, too. And then also just promoting engagement and partnering with their own peers, so learning how to get along with other kids their age. This would be a sample schedule that those preschool students would go through. So as you can see, they do some small group, some large group with SEL, social emotional learning concepts. They'll do some large motor, small motor skills within there, some free choice, some handwriting, and then also they have, you know, lunch and snack and so forth. So that's a typical school day for those students. We have some curriculum that they'll be using, the handwriting without tears. They'll be accessing some of our numeracy and literacy materials as well. So really focusing on that whole child development for those little pre-K students. The next one is our K-38 Targeted Services Programming, again, happening in the month of June minus June 19, Monday through Thursdays again. Typically, it's about a four-hour day, usually ending by about noon, airing between buildings. Again, purpose is to provide remediation intervention for students below grade level, but also in reading and math, but also providing enrichment opportunities and exploratory services. So for example, at Pinewood in grades K through 5, this would be a sample schedule. They'll have that morning meeting where they'll do some social emotional learning skills, you know, get to know each other, team building kinds of things. They'll have about an hour for reading and foundational skills and knowledge building. Then in the afternoon, they'll have about an hour for math and STEM projects, where they'll be using various curriculum resources that the district has already purchased. So none of this is an extra expense at all. And then there'll be some story time, educational games, some free choice sort of near the end of the day. So although it looks pretty structured, there's also that recess time in the middle of the day, and again, a lot of peer interaction and experiences that are fun for them. For middle school targeted services, grades 6 through 8, please keep in mind, this is not a credit recovery kind of a program like you'll see for the high school. This is really for kids who are struggling or have fallen behind during the regular school year, but this gives them an extra opportunity for that math and reading, but also for some enrichment at their grade level as well. So you'll see that they do some goal setting. They'll do that at the beginning of the day, end of the day. So they'll set goals, and then they'll review their goals near the end of the day. And then they'll have about 50 minutes for math, 50 minutes for reading. Sometimes math will be in the morning, sometimes in the afternoon, it just depends. And again, they'll have that adventure time kind of in the middle of the day, to break their day up, do some career exploration, and some project-based learning. And then again, like I said, goals at the end of the day, do some M&amp;M work and then dismissal. So that's typically, again, like I said, you know, about 8:00 to 11:45, or sometimes it's 8:30 till 12, something like that. So that's middle school targeted services. And then we have our 9 through 12 Credit Recovery Program. Again, same thing, month of June, Monday, but this goes Monday through Friday. This is actually shorter than we typically have. We usually have a full day where students can go from, sometimes it's 7 until 3, or 7 until 4, to make up credits. But this year, again, due to traffic, due to construction, all of that, we're keeping this down to a half a day for all of them. This is credit recovery for students who need to make up credits in their required courses for graduation. So it's not an opportunity for students to take extra credits or elective credits above and beyond what's required for graduation. Thus far, last I heard, it was up to 121 students for grades 9 through 12. My anticipation has probably grown since I got that last number, not last week. That's credit recovery. C5 and Connections, this is a special education program for our students who are 12-plus. So the law says that we educate students until age 21, and now I believe it's age 22, it's changing to. So this is a tiered level of service, and they really work on community learning, community living skills, social, social learning, functional skills that they can use, rec and leisure. They do some career exploration. They do some work-based learning outside of the school day, community service. So they just do a lot of different things related to post-secondary or employment opportunities for those students. And then the last one is their Northwest Talent Academy, and that- And then the last one is our Northwest Talent Academy, and that actually goes June 17th, and then it goes into July, so it kind of straddles the two months. And Monday through Thursday, but this is a full day. This is a registration where students can pick and choose from many different courses that they would want to take. It is a fee-based program. And if you look down the list, you can see a typical criteria for a Northwest Academy student. They have to be somebody who's highly motivated, enjoys intense study and challenge, willing to be involved, and then they have a strong desire to complete projects, organization, successful with group interactions, a lot of it is project-based but high-level, challenge-thinking kinds of things, be very self-disciplined and emotionally mature. So that's sort of the requirement for NWTA. I did put in the presentation, these are both links, where you can go to the NWTA website and kind of check out what all is offered there, or you could go to the catalog and see all of the different courses and the fees that are based there. So that's NWTA. And I think there are 10 school districts that are participating in our NWTA program, which is fantastic. And I don't remember how many students, but it's several hundred students, some of the participate.
Several hundred over all the districts combined?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to one of the ladies who coordinate that program recently, and they have the most registrations they've ever had for running the program. I can't remember how many hundreds it was. I don't want to misspeak, but it's wildly popular and growing. And my understanding is it's also an invitation-only type of thing, a teacher from, their teachers have to recommend them from their primary school for this.
Yep.
Are any of the other programs open to school districts outside of our own?
No. The ESY program or the C5 and Connections, that's a co-op program, so that would be Becker Big Lake in Monticello, but otherwise, no, not the rest of them.
How does the 21 or whatever it is now for the Credit Recovery 9 through 12 compared to prior years?
Question. Do you know, Mr. Colwell? I think it's pretty comparable. They usually have a pretty high number every summer, but yeah, I can get back to you with that. Who show up? Yeah.
Do you think if we cut the time in half, that we can supply the demand there for the number, if the kids, if it's more kids than normal, and we're doing half the amount of time, can we get them what they need?
I think we can because the Credit Recovery class that is also offered during the school year gives them an opportunity to take that course during the regular school year and make up credits. So summer is not the only time when they can do that, so they'll have a few different opportunities. Did you have something to add?
With our schedule next year, we have, as Cindy was talking about, the tri-model, we have built-in sections so that they don't make up their credit this summer in their required grad credits. We'll have that opportunity next year through either credit. Students academically, and then also the, within the trimester, we'll have more sections of those required core classes for them to be able to access.
You want the mic?
No.
For the people in live stream.
So we should have more opportunities next year to build on what summer school looks like this year.
Yeah, thank you.
I did look up those NWTA numbers. So just like looking at where we were at right now, we have, after the first week of registration, and that was several weeks ago, so we have around 200 unique users and around 500 registrations, and that's up, you know, about 150 in each. So we keep growing that summer program, so almost doubling it, really. That's NWTA.
It's really a remarkable program because in years past, the closest place to go was Maple Grove for summer-type enrichment GT programming, and so that it really is amazing that we've centered it here and then opened it up to so many students.
Cindy, I have a question for you.
Yep. Yeah, I want to, when you're done, I have one, too.
How does all the summer programming staffing look?
It's all been fully stacked with, we have about 12, I think, teachers who are working the Targeted Services Program at the elementary, including our district literacy lead will be there. We have an LEL teacher working, we have special ed teachers on staff. So we have, all of the staffing is taken care of, even with preschool, I believe.
That considers ancillary staff as well?
Pardon me.
Ancillary staff as well, so paraprofessionals, custodians, kitchen?
I don't believe there's anything left to staff. Have you guys heard anything? Yeah. And I've got to say that the K through 5 Elementary Targeted Services Program this year, we're going to be in one building, so we'll be at Pinewood this year. Typically, we'll have it in both buildings, but we actually had lower numbers of students register for that this year. We have a hunch maybe because of the shortened time or because of the construction and everything happening, maybe. But so we combined it all into one building to streamline busing, staffing, all of that.
So summer programming used to be in July in Monticello traditionally, which is not really the norm. I mean, if you look at other school districts, a lot of them have it in June, right when staff are still there. But, you know, maybe traditionally speaking, our families like to have that little break. They like their children to have a little break. And most of the summer programming was in July, with the exception of Credit Recovery has always been June. So that number shouldn't have changed because of any date change. The other programs are more the ones that have changed.
And can we also talk about, a little bit about transportation for those programs? Which students are eligible for transportations and which ones are not? Which programs?
So we have transportation for all programs, except for the NWTA provides their own transportation. Whoops. Is that you, Gavin? Okay, sorry. So yeah, all of the rest of them do, right down to Credit Recovery, every ESY, all of those have transportation, special transportation for some of our DCD.
Potentially, as it sits right now, this is our last year of funding.
This was the money set aside.
For the targeted services summer programming. So we're really happy that we've been able to add transportation for the last couple of years, but we also know that it's a luxury that in the end, I don't know that we're going to be able to keep it unless we fund it differently.
You're just speaking to the transportation, or are you also referring to the targeted services for this?
Just the transportation.
The transportation. And is that, that's part of the leftover COVID funds?
That's their money, leftover.
Do we know what the total is for transportation for the summer? So we don't need, I guess, need to know it right away, but if we could find that out?
I know that Tina had set aside enough for the summer's transportation, so it's in a little pot of money that she's been saving, so just for this. So that's good. Right, Tina? Their fingers crossed you just said. All right.
Any additional discussion from the board? Questions? Okay, thank you. I think we're going to keep Cindy at the podium, and we're going to move into a discussion on our grant updates.
All right. So I'm going to run through the grants that are, that are competitive grants. Those are grants that we had to apply for and be awarded, and that not everyone received an award for. So I'll run through those, and these are the ones that are currently active. So we've had grants in the past that have come and gone, so I won't go through those. But these are just the currently active grants. So the first one, Expansion of Rigorous Course Grant, and again, I'll say purpose, amount, what's the timeline, who is funded. So the purpose of this one was to expand access to rigorous courses like AP courses, CIS courses, that provide career and technical education coursework or career pathway opportunities. So that was 271,000 and change, and it started on April 15, 2022, and it ends this June 30. So this grant is coming to an end. We are required to submit to MDE, our final documentation, showing all of the things that we accomplished, how we use the money. And so Rebecca Conkle is working on that. And so we were able to fund our Career Pathways Coordinator up until this June 30 with this particular grant. We also applied for the Youth Skills Training Grant. This is actually the second one that we had. The first one has expired, but this is our second Youth Skills Training Grant. And again, it's designed to help high school students to find pathways into high-growth, high-demand occupations and meaningful work experiences. And so that was 99,400, started July 1, 2023. We've kind of tried to reserve that money. We haven't spent much of it at all, if any, well, a little bit, maybe. And that will fund Rebecca going into next year, so one additional year for our Career Pathways Coordinator. And that also covers training, marketing, industry certifications for our students. They don't have to pay for any of that if they're involved in this youth skills training. So these are our internships that we have with community businesses around Monticello. Introduction to Teaching Grant, this one is two years. It started November 21 of this year. It'll end on June 30, 2025. That's used to expand our CIS courses, encouraging students to become schoolteachers, basically to become part of our education for workforce, especially American Indian students of color pursuing teaching degrees. And so what this has helped us, oh, it was almost $200,000. This has helped us fund partially our Career Pathways Coordinator, so a little bit of this money plus our Youth Skills Training combined will help pay for that. It helps pay for our CIS Intro to Ed Course Instructor. Also, there's two new courses in the Education Pathway coming, this coming year, that I think the principals had already shown you before. We also have a Peer Tutor Youth Internship Program where students had paid tutoring internships with, which was incredible, also paid for college visits and supplies. So that's our Intro to Teaching Grant.
If I could, I'm just going to pause there because there are several board members that have been here since my first year in this position, and it was a directive of the board that they wanted to see some of these things, so the who and what. So a lot of the career pathways work. Six years ago, the board wanted to see some improvements and ability for our counseling staff to be able to do some of this type of work. And so I was meeting monthly with administration and counselors, and at that time, the counselors just would show me numbers, and they just said it was impossible to do that work with the amount of needs in our building. And so we started then looking with the current administration now, and Cindy Fashing and myself, and really looking at these grants to help deliver some bodies to do the work that just we weren't able to get done. So I just want to thank the history of the board of knowing that our counselors needed some support, and we provided that. And now you look at the high school and how they're flying in a lot of those areas, and we still have more work to do, but it all started from about five to six years ago, was the, five and a half years ago was when it came to me.
Yeah. And they are doing incredible work. I will just put in a plug for that. You've all seen that, how far they've come with the career pathways, so awesome. Next grant is called the Nonexclusionary Discipline Grant. This one's fairly new. We applied a while ago, but it was active February 19th. And so again, we haven't used a lot of that money. We're reserving most of it for all of next year, so it'll end at the end of next school year. The purpose is to develop and implement a professional learning plan for school staff to utilize non-exclusionary discipline practices, the focus on maintaining respect, trust, keeping students in the classroom rather than excluding them from the classroom, finding different ways. So it's more about prevention instead of reaction. So who's funded through this? We're going to have a 1.0 Behavior Analyst. We have mindfulness instruction with Michelle Holt House. She's bringing that all the way up into the high school. She can work with our athletes, she can work with our young students and our older students, and she does a lot of work with our staff, too. Also, we have some training coming this school year on inclusion cultural awareness. Most of this is best practice and required by law that we begin to train our staff. Eric, I don't know if you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, no, I think we do a lot of really amazing things, especially in inclusion. You look at the center-based programming that we've had for years in the district. You look at our unified programming, and I think as we grow in diversity, it's just important to learn about who's sitting in front of us and to continue to grow ourselves. And so that's what a lot of the cultural componentcies from the state, and frankly, from most states across the United States have those components of their education certification program. And so it's just us making sure that we're mindful of who's in our town and how we can best educate both our administration and all of our staff so that we can lead with integrity of every kid every day.
Our MTSS Grants, we have had two MTSS Grants. The first one we had got in FY '23, '24, so that one is expiring at the end of June. And that was 472,000, and we reapplied and got another two years, so that'll be 250,000 for the next two school years. And the purpose of that, of course, is to build capacity on building our multi-tiered systems of support across all of our buildings and across our district, implement the Minnesota Framework in order to improve academic and behavior across our district. So we've made great strides. We have a long way to go yet, but I think we've made a lot of really, really great improvements to our buildings. This went towards funding our MTSS Coordinator, who is also our data analyst, our Educlima expert, had also helped purchase our Educlima platform. Also, .5 of Lindsay Repman, our District Literacy Lead, was funded through this grant. I would have to say that both those positions are irreplaceable, and both positions are going to be replaced next year, unfortunately, and so we have some work to do. Also, toward Team Stipends. So those are our two MTSS Grants, over a total of $720,000 or so. This is our second and third Teacher Mentorship and Retention Grants. So we first received one back in 2023, I think that was about $71,000. Now we have received a grant at the beginning of this year for FY '24 and '25 for $114,000. And then we just received another one for the next two years for $90,848. And the purpose of this is to expand our mentoring program, our induction program, and our retention programs across the district. We've been able to fund a mentor leader, that is Alison Colwell. 35 to 40 Teacher Mentor Stipends across the district for the past several years. .5 Instructional Coach, this year it was Jen Mackey and Emily Meyer who shared that .5. Next year it will be towards Jen Mackey, will be a 1.0, half of it paid through this grant. The Teacher Mentor Stipend is $1,200 for the year, and there are monthly activities and participations that need, they either need, they need to be in a training or they need to be working with their mentee on specific things as far as instructional strategies, helping them with behavior management, helping them learn how to do the ins and outs of Monticello. And so they're really that support person for all of our new, them feel welcome and support them with anything that they need.
Teacher mentoring a newer teacher?
Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So we have one of our veteran teachers or one of our highly qualified teachers who's paired up purposefully with a new teacher in our district, and then they work together all year. So those new teachers not only have a teacher mentor, but they also have an instructional coach that walks with them throughout the school year. And sometimes, and like next year, we're going to have one of the teachers who will have a second year of mentoring, so we can provide mentoring above and beyond just one year if we want to. That's just a cash stipend because if you add up all of their hours, it amounts to, I can't remember how many amounts to, probably 45 or something. This goes right to the mentor for their paid time. Yep. Because it's all outside of contract time, most of it.
Can I just confirm that all of the new teachers are eligible?
Every new teacher, special education, co-op.
Not only teachers of color or American Indian.
Oh, gosh, no, no. The purpose of this is to retain all new teachers, but especially to provide support groups, and they're called affinity groups. but especially to provide support groups, and they're called affinity groups for teachers of color. But those support groups have additional people who are helping to support those who might feel a little bit more isolated in their buildings. And so, but all teachers receive a mentor, every new teacher, whether they're Gen Ed, Special Ed, co-op, doesn't make any difference.
How far does new extend? One year, two year, three years?
One year. Sometimes it can go into two. Now instructional coaching can go into three years. The mentorship itself is that really making sure they have a really great first year and that they don't kind of panic and abandon ship because it's a lot of hard work the first year. So this person is really there to help ground them.
Has this program been around for a while?
Long time.
Is there outcome, are there any outcome studies that show that the students, the teachers that have had the mentorship remain in profession longer?
We've had a mentorship program here in Monticello for a while, but it hasn't been to this extent. And it hasn't had this much teacher involvement. And so this is only our second year of heavy mentoring program. So we don't have the data really to look at that. But it would be a really good question, Kathy, to be asking teachers if they are leaving. Did they feel not supported? But I don't think I see very many of our new teachers.
I know there's some studies done at the MDE level. And I'll specifically go and look for this one and see if there was an OMB report on that or not.
Yeah. So this is through Pelsby. These grants are right directly through Pelsby. Our Grow Your Own Student Grant, that was $568,000 for five years. So that's about $110,000 per year. So that'll expire in 2027. And again, it's to create a pathway for students who are interested in education. And it will address issues of equity and increased diversity in the teacher workforce. Some of the people who were funded through this program. So we have Toni Chido, who's been our Grow Your Own Program Coordinator. Doesn't completely fund her, but funds .75. Spanish interpreter, Sandra Akuna, training, curriculum resources, and then student scholarships that can range anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000. So usually they give anywhere from two to five scholarships per year through this grant. This goes just to seniors, graduating seniors who are interested in the field of education. The Grow Your Own Adult Grant, that was $500,000 for five years, ends in 2028. Again, helps to pay Toni Chido, part of her Grow Your Own Coordinator, adult scholarships. These scholarships are much bigger. They go $10,000 to $20,000 per year until they receive their teaching license. And again, same purpose to increase and diversify the workforce. The law says we have to use at least 80% of the funds for employees or community members affiliated with the district who are of color or American Indian. We have been able to meet that thus far. So right now we've had four award winners this year. Two of them are Caucasian and two of them are people of color. Next year we'll have five to nine. So it'll be the two Caucasian and probably seven people of color. So we're working towards that. And what we can do is we can take any student in our building who shows an interest in education. They will go through the Intro to Education Courses, all of those different education courses. There's an application process that they can go through to receive the student scholarship. And then as soon as they graduate on Friday, then they qualify also for the adult scholarship. So we look at our students who are interested. We look at our paras who are interested. We look at our cooks, our custodians, or anybody who works for Monticello Public Schools who's interested in pursuing a degree in teaching is eligible to apply for these scholarships. But again, we have guidelines we need to follow, too. So it's been very good. We also have the, I didn't put it on here, is the Grow Your Own Pipeline, SPED Pipeline Grant. That's specific to just special education, but that's a co-op grant. That's not our grant specifically, but we do have one-fourth of a share in that grant. The three schools plus the co-op divided that grant in four ways. So we have several co-op employees who are paraprofessionals or ESS employees who are interested in pursuing those degrees in special education. So that's one that I didn't put up here.
On this slide right here, how many people applied and how did you, how was it selected on the number?
Yeah. So last year we had 10 or 12 people apply. I had a committee together who went through all of the applications. Mr. Olson was part of that. We looked through all of the narratives and the application details. And we chose the finalists. And then there were also people who were on that application who we knew would qualify for the SPED Pipeline Grant. So we diverted them, sorry, to the SPED Pipeline. And then we kept the ones with us who were not SPED Pipeline. And then we looked at those ones. So a lot of the people who applied either received one of these Grow Your Own Adult or Grow Your Own SPED Pipeline Grants. And so this year, we have enough people who are already carrying over into this grant because I want to fund them for four years. I don't want to give them a grant one year and then say goodbye. Okay, now they did their first year and now they don't have help. So we will fund them until they're done. So typically it's, you know, two to four years, depending upon where they're at in their education journey. So we won't really need to open up an application, but the first people we look at are our students first and then our staff who are within our Monticello Schools for the next level. And then if we don't have enough people to fill that, then we put it out in the community. So last, when we did it before, we put it out in the community letter. Anybody in the community could apply.
What is the accountability for students who may not finish?
Yeah. So they, at the end of every semester for them, they need to send me their grades and they need to send me the FAFSA to show that they've applied for financial aid. They need to be maintaining their coursework with a C or better in order to receive the scholarship money. So that's how they get that. Now, if they decide to move away from education, they will lose any further assistance. We can't take the money back at that point. Consulted MDE about that. No, you don't take the money back at that point. But they just wouldn't get future awards. So that's the accountability piece.
If they don't continue in education, there's no accountability to pay the money back or anything. And there's no.
Stipulation to pay the money back. No.
And there's no requirement for them to come back here?
There is. Yep. There is a requirement in our, so we have a contract that we go through with them. And the contract says that we want them to come back and work for Monticello for three years after they receive their degree, if there is a position open that they qualify for and if we choose to hire them for that position.
But Kathy's comment, could they break that contract and we can't do anything?
Probably.
Yeah, I would say it's just like any of the scholarships. So scholarships in general. I mean, we have students who come back and they go to school for one, two, three years. And all of a sudden they'll say, you know, sorry, I'm not going to school anymore. But you know, thank you for, you know, giving me the opportunity for those, you know, two years, whatever we gave them a scholarship for. And there's no repercussion on, that's the way most scholarships work. There might be some scholarships that are embedded within, you know, business structures where you're, you know, they're giving the scholarship themselves and you have to come back. But for these ones, they're, you know, more of that anonymous donor type of strategy. And there's not a lot of accountability if they break that. You try, but.
Yeah. That's why we try to have the support systems in place. So working with the colleges and having those affinity groups of people who are pursuing their degrees together can support each other and do online meetings together. And, you know, how can we as a district support you? How can your college support you? I've worked as a goal between, between one of the students and her, one of the colleges that she attended that she had some incidents with. And so I had to help her navigate those things. And so, yeah, we don't just say, here's the money, bye. So we're trying our best to keep those.
To clarify, I heard you say anonymous donor Superintendent Olson, but I didn't hear the rest of the phrase around that. But this money is appropriated by the legislature. So it's tax dollars that are passed through MDE to the schools.
Yeah.
I was talking about scholarships in general, making that how there isn't, we don't have a lot of teeth when we give money out. And so I think the same is, is that you have as much teeth as you can legally. And you hope that people complete their contract. But whether they, what they do on their end for their legislative dollars and what we do is probably pretty similar.
The legislature is using us as a funnel to.
You're a pass-through, basically.
Yeah.
And this is a new program.
Yeah.
There's some reports online that you can read about what the OMB found.
Yeah. So, you know, one by one, they're trying to address the workforce shortage areas. And I believe the next one coming is a CTE shortage area that I believe will also be funded. So we have several that are, that are coming through the pipeline, I think, that we're going to be seeing. But this was the greatest shortage area. And I think that's why they started there, be my guess.
Students are also required to stay in-state to take this money?
Yes. It has to be a Minnesota-approved teacher preparation program.
So if they're doing an online program out of state or if they're going to a school out of state, they're not eligible for this money?
Yeah. That's a good point. Thank you for saying that. And then I just put this up here so you can see some of the other grant programs that are not competitive. We don't, we have to fill out an application, of course, but if you fill out the application and you do it correctly, you receive the funding. So title grants and achievement integration grants. But I just really wanted you to see how many positions we have that are funded through these various grant monies that we, that we receive, thank goodness. So all of our title interventions, all the rest of our reading interventions, some of our ESS EL supports over at Eastview, social workers, instructional coaches, family liaison. We've got some high school math intervention and credit recovery. So there's several things that we are allowed to do with this money that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So we're grateful to have it. We do appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from me? I've taken way too much time. I apologize.
There's a grant writer that we paired up with Sherburne County on. How much of these grants are written by that person and then how much is written by us? This is all.
All.
So the money we're, yeah. So the money that we're spending for the co-op, for that grant writer, what have we received for grants from that?
COPS. So the big federal grant.
Okay.
So that's been, I guess, the biggest.
The $500,000.
Yep.
Covered cameras and.
Okay.
Security cameras.
And then the Special Ed Pipeline one that just started.
Special Ed Pipeline. Thank you.
But yeah, the rest were internal, written by lots of teams over there on the wall.
Any other questions for Cindy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Have a good night.
And just for me personally, I just wanted to keep these in front of people so that we understand. Plus, it's good to have them understanding with the budget to know that these are, you know, short-term funding sources that ultimately we have to consider as we continue to work on our budget, both projections for this year and then long-term budgeting, planning.
Are any of those automatically renewable or you have to, they're all competitive?
On this page that we're on or that we, the page that we ended on, those would be ones that you are, you know, you still have to do some things for them, but the renewals were the ones that were on the first several pages. Those were competitive grants, so.
Okay, moving on to Safe and Healthy Culture. We have Tina Burkholver, Director of Business Services, with us for both Point A and Point B. She's going to be discussing a joint purchasing agreement and then some discussion about food service budget. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you. So busy with budgeting or food service stuff. So this first item has to deal with food service. With purchasing, there are rules we have to follow with larger purchases or when you have a lot of purchases that accumulate a certain dollar amount throughout the year. So anything over $25,000 or under $175,000, you have to get at least two or more quotes. Anything over the $175,000, you have to do a sealed bid process. Or you could look at state contracts or do some joint purchasing agreements with other districts. And typically larger school districts do that. And smaller districts piggyback onto their agreements to kind of get that buying power. So I have quotes out for milk. I have quotes out for bread. I have a RFP process for prime food vendor. Those are all due on the 6th. And so to save time, trying to piggyback with any district I can on other things. So with our produce and our paper supply, tonight asking you to approve a joint purchasing agreement with District 112, which is the Eastern Carver County School District, and get on their agreement with the produce and paper supplies. A lot of this, you know, procurement, planning process happens in February, March, April. And so just trying to do what I can in anticipation of Laura coming on July 1st. And then once that year, three-quarters of the year gets under her belt, she can, you know, move forward and redo the list all over again. But I think with quotes and bread and the prime food, I think you can have that for two years. So she'll be set for a couple of years. But anything else that we do, some joint purchasing, she'll have to maybe reevaluate it and look at, so.
Kevin, can you open the purchasing agreement, please, on the big screen?
Need the red for this or just an action item?
I'm never sure if you have to read the whole resolutions or not. That's not my training.
In witness whereof Independent School District Number 112 and Independent School District 882 have executed the agreement to be signed and approved by the proper officers of each of the contracting parties on the dates written below.
Seconded.
So the purchasing agreement has been written, read by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Jamie Seben. All those in favor of approving the purchase agreement as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Now, budget. I gotta do it? Aw, Kevin.
In my understanding, this is not an action item. This is just a presentation.
Yes. Our first look at the General Fund and the Food Service Fund. Okay. So this is a slide of all our funds. We took a look at Community Ed, OPAB, debt service, and our internal service. It's like timed. Stop doing that. And so tonight, we're just taking a look at our General Fund and our Food Service Fund. Our budget is a lot of estimates right now for revenues and expenses. So it is subject to revision and typically do that around December, January as our first revision, but then final revision approval about March or April. This is our budget timeline. So we're still in June. We're not quite yet ready for the approval, but it'll be our first look, like I said, at our General and Food Service Fund. First, we'll look at the assumptions that you approved in March. On the revenue side, we have enrollment projections around $4,184 and our kindergarten at $267, which is about 12 sections. In this legislative session, nothing new has passed, but we do have a 2% increase in our general education aid. We also have revised compensatory estimates with higher numbers of families being eligible for free and reduced meal benefits through direct certification. Our CARES or ARP funds will be spent, so we won't have any of that moving forward. Thanks, Kevin. And then we have other state grants in place that Cindy mentioned. The Grow Your Own, Adult Institute, MTSS, Mentoring, Intro to Ed or Intro to Teaching, and the Non-Exclusionary Discipline Grant. Expense your side, we have some staffing changes based on enrollment. So with enrollment, there were no changes. There might have been some shifting between buildings through the elementaries. They all kind of shifted within that. And then one going from a middle school, minus one at middle school and adding one at the high school. And then we do have higher needs with, within our students that are receiving special ed services. Some higher numbers are coming through their forecast with the special ed coordinators. So we have additional staffing, speech teachers, and education support specialists, full-time and part-time, and then two additional speech teachers. And at the same time, we are shifting some programs from the co-op program that we started as a Monticello program, but we started them under the co-op because we were at the floor for special ed funding. Now we're at a time where our. Now we're at a time where expenses are increasing. So if we shift those programs to the MONI budget, we'll generate more state special education aid and be able to access that additional cross-subsidy aid. And then also our contract and benefits, for the most part, some of them are settled. Some are still waiting to be settled with some employee groups. We think we'll have three retirements that will see some savings in our general fund. Also, this summer, we have our health insurance bids. So that won't be known until closer to the end of July of what that percent would be on our health insurance. Other expenses will be anywhere from 0 to 10% for our supplies and utilities. Not, we don't need to borrow short-term. And our expenditure, expenditures will probably be 0.5% under budget. Our fund balance assumptions, we have our fund balance policy where we try to be 8 to 16% of our general fund expenditures. We're going to use our committed severance fund balance for our severance obligations, spending that down, deferring our third-party billing funds for the '24, '25 school year. Look at our carryover assigned fund balances. They'll be on hold each year and evaluate if we need to retain some of those or award them back to the buildings. And with all those assumptions in place and the budget being calculated, we'll probably end about 8.8%. With our forecast, we thought we'd be above 10%, like 10.2% with, with our estimates, with salaries and benefits, and shifting programs and our transportation contract, that gets us to 8.8%. We're also going to utilize our trust for our non-certified employee retiree insurance obligations. So our general fund is our main operating fund. It includes our capital budget. It in, when the state looks at our general fund, it includes the special ed cooperative staff that they purchase from us, but we keep that in a separate fund. So that's about 10.6 million. So I have it a little bit broken down in the summary, but it's still within the total because that's what the, the state will see. On the revenue side, so our revenues will go up to about 59.6 million. Our levy increased a little bit from the prior year just with higher enrollments. And then also, we have more coming in levy versus state aid. And that was talked about at our September and December truth and taxation hearing. On the state side, again, higher aid in our state special ed aid and the cross-subsidy due to shifting of those programs. Then also, a lot of the grants are falling under the state sources. We did have some, the MTSS, the first round, and the rigorous coursework, they're state grants, but their funds that they were pass, that they were accessing were federal funds. So those in '23, '24 were under the federal line. But moving forward for '24, '25, the MTSS Round Two is actually going to be a state grant from state funds. So that's why you'll see a large increase in state sources and a decrease in federal sources. We have the COPS grant in the '23, '24 school year. That's about 500,000. That's assuming everything will be ordered and paid and received in the '23, '24 budget, but some might be delayed and happen in '24, '25. And we'll just make that adjustment when we look at budget revisions, if that needs to happen. Any questions on revenues? On the next slide, it has how it's broken down, how the money comes to us. So the majority of it is state aid, 18% at, for property tax levy, and then just some smaller chunks from federal sources and other. All right, expenses, we're almost to 60 million for next year. A large increase to that is our salary and benefits. It's shifting those programs from the co-op to MONI. It's adding those special ed staff for those higher needs in our special ed programs. And it's using a 16% increase for health insurance bids. Again, it's not known, just trying to estimate on that. For supplies and materials and capital outlay, they're seeing some decreases. Again, that's the 500,000 of that is the COPS grant coming off. And then we have, our scoreboard lease has been paid off in '23, '24. That was the last year of that lease payment. And tech also had a lot more purchases through '23, '24 to get all of our grades, one through eight classrooms, kind of set up on a consistent basis. So wherever a teacher is, one through eight, they'll have similar setups. Also, our phone system was about to be obsolete. So we had to buy some new phones, but at a discount rate that Jason found. And then also, our annual phone cost moving forward will be cheaper. So we'll save some utility cost as well. Next slide has the breakdown of our expenditure types. So again, almost 80% is salary and benefits with purchasing services, supplies, materials, and capital outlay rounding out the last 20. Any questions on expenses? Jason, that's a Jason question. No, he didn't tell me.
How long did the last ones last? How long is the current system in place?
I feel like I've had my phone since I've been here, 12 years, but I don't.
So I'm thinking, you know, somewhere in that 10 to 9.
That doesn't sound like Jason.
I.
Oh, you had mentioned that we're expecting an increase in our insurance, about 16%. Do you know when we're going to find out that information?
So our first bid opening is in mid-June, and our second will do a best and final in mid-July. But the rates are private until we award who we are going with. So internally, I can't discuss what I see on the first round and the second round. It's not until I tell you what we've selected that I can.
You've accounted for 16% roughly. So if it comes in under that, we're in good shape. If it comes in over that, we have to furrow our brow.
Well, we'll be covered with our employee contracts because we have limitations set in there. But it'll be like our retiree health insurance, where we do pay two singles or we say we pay the equivalent of what the active person gets. So that we could have an impact there, which would impact the levy because our retiree health insurance costs for anyone's that are sunset, we put on our levy. So if we don't want to access the levy because they went up double, then you have to figure out a way, how are we going to pay for that?
So what you're hinting at is that we're going to have some difficult, potentially difficult decisions coming up in that area? And we'll know by August?
Yeah, so we'll come to the first works session meeting in August to go over that.
I have a couple of questions in the budget book on the preliminary, if we want to open that. Because I just have some specific line items, per year-over-year increases that I have some questions on. And go scroll to the bottom. Keep going till you see the, the budget book. There you go. Now just scroll down to page 20 in code 408.
High school or middle school?
High school.
So that would be our shifting of the co-op programs. So 402, 407, 408 in high school, middle school, you'll see an increase because that's where we're adding the staff to MONI budgets versus the co-op budgets.
Okay, so that, because I'm looking at year-over-year and it's, it's, it's 19% change from last year, but this year it's 101%. So it goes 256,000 to 500,000. So that's what caught my eye on that one. Also, in the, in the high school for health services on line 720, there was a, a jump of, I just picked out a couple. There's a jump of 27%. The year before was down 44%, the year before was up 72%. So it seems like that just fluctuates a lot.
Yep, we're figuring out how to staff and allocate the nursing staff.
Okay.
In place. So we've been kind of playing around with how to divvy up who we have.
Okay.
We did have three nurses, then we, that one resigned, and then moving forward two.
Okay. And then DCD, mild, moderate, what, what is that? Because that shows up quite a few times. Some have a jump, you know, from 27% for the middle school. Little Mountain has a 295% jump from 80,000 to 300,000.
What program code is that?
DCD, mild, moderate. So that's.
Is that 40?
Oh, sorry, 402.
Yep.
Yeah, you know what that is.
Yep, so that is the shifting again.
Shifting again in that same thing of, of the jumps that we're seeing. On the district office side, one, actually one that went down was scoreboard advertising. It has it going down 81%. You mentioned we paid the lease off.
Yep, so that's about 85,000.
Okay.
But we allocate, so we have like Jared Hines paid out of that fund balance that we've assigned to. And any repairs or maintenance that we need at the stadium come from that assigned fund balance.
Okay. Right, right. Okay, so then when I see the Sherburne expense, we're transferring money from the Sherburne side, the co-op side to our side, but I see that the Sherburne side went up also 100%. So how does that?
Sherburne down below went down.
Yeah, Sherburne expense 408, that one also went up 100, 100%. 232,000, 493,000. So if.
They're adding programs as well. So they're adding to their Level 3 and Level 4 programs.
That's to cover more of our portion.
On the bottom piece?
Yeah.
Like, so that's totally their staff that they're buying from Monticello.
Okay, okay.
And then if they're adding staff to, for the new Level 3 and Level 4 programs that they're implementing, where we have our ALP programs right now, depending on where those programs land, if it's the 408, 407, or whatnot, that's how they're allocated.
And then one, one last one, sorry. So the middle school, there's a secondary guidance service that jumped up by 63% from 150 to, to 242. So that's just adding.
Yep, so that is better allocating, because the state has those, all those program codes. You have to, you know, put people where they're supposed to be. So the counselor that we added at the middle school, it was probably in a different program code, but it should be in that one. And we're using our S or, or not our S or money, our student support aid.
Okay.
Cover that. I was ready.
No, you're, you're good. I know, that's why I had a list for you. On there. Yeah. Right. And, and this is where the, we're like, this is where the org chart would help because we can see that, see who's shifting around, who's moving, what makes sense, and then follow, follow this around a little bit. Because it's a lot to dig through and, and trying to compare and contrast and, and try to keep up with where everything's moving. Especially when we get the list of, you know, the, the employees that are adding, leaving. Like unless we keep track on our own of every little thing that's moving around, it, it's hard to properly dig into this a little bit. So it's, it's quite confusing with that. So that's why the org chart is, is such a hot topic issue. I'm trying to get that finished, so.
You get the staffing master, right?
I, I'll have to go look. I don't know if I.
I think Rob shared that with him about two weeks ago. Really, the staffing master is my building, so, I mean, it's, it's in its, in documents page instead of, you know, the, the org chart's going to.
Right, right.
So what does that mean for our fund balance? So we are projected to start the year about 7.6 million in our overall fund balance, having revenues come in at 59.6 million, expenditures almost at 60 million. So spending down our fund balance about 300,000. That was kind of what we thought in our financial forecast and about 7.3 million. And again, about 8.8% will be on reserve. So here has the breakdown of what's restricted. So what has to be reserved with all the strings attached for the state money that comes in, like LTFM. So that's why you see a decrease in the restricted fund balance. We have some larger roofing projects that we're going to do, so we're spending down our LTFM money. Our assigned and committed, that's the scoreboard. That's the carryover with buildings and technology and the committed severance line item, all in that middle line. And then what's left are unassigned, non-spendable fund balance. Taking a look at the three years and next year, we're still hovering around that 8%. Some lower, some higher in that 8 to 9% range. Any final questions on general fund before I move on to food service?
I just want to say you've done a good job staying with the 8%. And I think that's probably been pretty much of a challenge for you.
I don't really like to be by 8%. I wanna, I like, I would like to get towards that middle.
And I just want to personally thank you for you digging in each and every year, like what we're doing with the co-op to better suit our district and financially helps us out too, to provide more, I think is brilliant. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a, a wealth of knowledge that we have with her, so.
I like the, but it was a lot this last month to get this put together, but I like the budget. That's my strength. So it was fun to work on the budget, but it was a lot of work and enjoyed it. So with the special revenue funds, we just have our food service fund left. Our overall summary with food service, hoping to end the year at 1.3 million in our fund balance for '23, '24. Looking at revenues of 2.7 million and expenses at 3.1 million. Spending down 350,000 to just over a million fund balance at the end of next year. So this accounts for all our food service programming. We're moving to the self-op module. So in here, we have our revenue that comes in from the state and federal government. And depending on how your population is made up determines what you get back from the state or the federal government. So if you have more students that are, have free meal benefits, you'll get more from the feds. If you have more students that are on the paid status, you would get more money from the state. So in this budget, I did a budget projection of 192,000 of breakfast meals and 468,000 in lunch meals. Again, similar population with free and reduced percentages by building. And then on the expense side, this is how it breaks down, a lot with salary and benefits and the supplies and materials or our food costs. Probably a little high on our food estimates, but it's hard to know what our meal, average meal cost is because we haven't had that information. So again, probably high. This includes our director position and moving away from the food service contracted management module. And made some staffing changes in here, added some time to our head and second cooks just so that Laura and her staff can have adequate time to successfully implement a module under that self-op module. And then also, I believe, another position to look at are meals off-site to, so to our nature base. And then the co-op, that'll be off-site as well.
Tina, I have a question. Since this is the first time we've kind of done our own self-op for meals, do we have some comparables of other districts that are similar size to ours? And how do your numbers compare with theirs?
I can ask. I do some questions every now and then with like Sauk, yeah, Sauk Rapids Rice, Sartell, Bemidji, Alexandria.
All of the ones you're mentioning.
Not all of them are self-op, like Sauk Rapids Rice, they're not self-op. They have a contracted. So I would have to figure out, ask, you know, if you are self-op, what is your average meal cost or whatnot? But again, it's subject to revision. But again, it's subject to revision. Laura can prove me wrong and say, yep, Tina was too high in her food budget, but...
This is going to be a learning year, I think, probably two years' worth of learning as we move into this new model, so.
Yep, because also, there's commodities that we get from the federal government, so if you're using more food with them, you know, strawberries, or beef crumbles, or whatever it might be, chicken, if you're using that, you know, in essence, it's free and you're saving the food cost. So I just, again, how that all plays and how you utilize that, you know, what menus you set up and what the kids like, perfect for Laura to figure out.
Well, we'll be interested to monitor the progress as it's unfolding. I think we're all pretty excited to have Laura in the new position, so it'll be good to see how that works out.
Again, first review and then final budget to approve in June 17.
Any other questions for discussion for Tina? Well, thank you, Tina. A lot of information for us to digest as usual, but a lot of detail in there, and we want to thank you for that. So moving on, we have Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources. It's going to be doing first reading of policies with us this evening. Welcome, Mr. Daniker.
Chair Zebarth, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. We had a, we had a productive policy meeting earlier this evening, and so we're bringing forward five policies for first read this evening. I'm going to start with the first one, Policy 613. This was on first read a month ago, as well as two weeks ago, and we're going to have it listed again as first read tonight. The graduation requirements need some updating with high school moving to the trimester model, and as the legislature wound down, they made some changes in law that affect the timeline for some of the implementation pieces. And also, the high school is still finalizing their student schedule for next year, and so they've asked if we continue to hold on this one. We do expect that we'll have resolution and be able to move this forward, hopefully at the July meeting. And so that's the plan for right now. So no new news on 613. The remaining four in front of us are new for this evening. Policy 606, the purpose of this policy is to provide direction for selection of textbooks and instructional materials. And so the, this is really in tandem with 606.5. I'll just pause there in case there are any questions regarding 606 from the board. Seeing none, we'll move on to 606.5. This is titled "The Procedure for Selection Use and Reconsideration of Textbook Instructional Material, Media, and Supplemental Material." The purpose of this policy is to provide direction and to delegate responsibility for selection reconsideration of academic materials. This policy is a relatively new policy in both the MSBA world and potentially ours as we would move to adopt it over the next two meetings. Again, this works in tandem with 606, but is identified, is designed, excuse me, to identify the procedure for the selection of those materials. The differing piece from the MSBA model policy on 606.5 is their model policy is specific to library materials, whereas locally, we have crafted this policy to address all instructional materials, whether they're used in a library, classroom, or otherwise. So any questions on this one from members of the board at all?
I'd just like to provide a little context for 606.5. This is something our board has been working on in our policy committee for well over a year, and we were very proud to have some of our initial work incorporated into the MSBA model policy. That's probably a first for our district, and then to have that adopted at the state level was really remarkable, I think. So I really do think that we're forward-thinking on this. We're right on the forward edge of the best practices for reconsideration of textbook instructional materials and library materials.
All right. Next is Policy 620. This is Credit for Learning. And the revisions that are being proposed in this one, again, largely stem back, or can track, can be tracked back, excuse me, to the high school redesign in terms of moving to, from, excuse me, semester to trimester. And so the purpose of this policy, this policy recognizes student achievement that occurs in post-secondary enrollment option and other advanced enrichment programs. This policy also recognizes student achievement that occurs in other schools, in alternative learning sites, and in out-of-school experiences such as community organizations, work-based learning, and other educational activities and opportunities. This policy addresses transfer of student credit from out-of-state, private, or home schools and online learning programs, and to address how the school district will recognize student achievement obtained outside of the school district. And it should be noted that this is becoming more of a common conversation in secondary education, especially at the high school level, as we've seen a proliferation of different opportunities and learning options for students over time. All right, and then the final one for consideration tonight is Number 904, "The Distribution of Materials on School District Property by Non-School Persons." The purpose of this policy is to provide for distribution of materials appropriate to the school setting by non-staff and non-students on school district property in a reasonable time, place, and manner, which does not disrupt the educational program nor interfere with the educational objectives of the school district. Of note, as we bring this forward for first read tonight, is the district does not currently have a Policy 904 on file. However, MSBA does have model policy that has existed for some time on this topic, and this was, this was noticed and brought forward by a concerned staff member in the district and just asked a question, why don't we have a policy for this and a procedure therein? Thank you to that staff member.
Any questions for Mr. Daniker from the rest of the board? So I'd encourage the board members to look through all these policies prior to July 15th, the July 15th meeting where they will be up for approval, second read and approval. Any questions, please direct them to Mr. Daniker.
Thank you.
Well, finding that our agenda is complete, is there any additional comments by any of the board? Well, then we will adjourn at 6:22 PM. We will reconvene at 6:30 in seven minutes for our work session. Thank you, we are adjourned.